All right. Good morning. Today is October 14, 2025, and welcome to the board's first work session for the recommended fiscal year 2027 capital budget and the fiscal year 2027 to 2032 capital improvement program. We will begin by asking board members to introduce themselves for the record.
Anuva Malu, student member of the board.
Good morning. Carla Silvestre, school board member at large.
Good morning, Brenda Wolf, District 5.
Good morning, Rita Montoya, board member at large.
Good morning, Laura Stewart, District 4.
Good morning, Julie Yang, District 3. Now today's work session is the, oh, all right, we have one more.
Hello. Good morning. My apologies for arriving a few minutes late. There was a vehicular accident on my street, but I'm Natalie Zimmerman, representing District 2.
Welcome. Good morning to you. Today's work session is the first opportunity for the board to ask questions and provide feedback on the superintendent's recommended plan. The board will hold public hearings on October 23rd and October 28th, 6:00 PM in the evening in this boardroom. Information regarding the schedule and sign up for these hearing is available on board's website. I just let you know it's noon today. The sign up will be open noon today. On November 4th, the board will hold a second work session to consider the feedback from public hearing and responses to board members' requests for information. Now, last year, the school system did really well with some follow up options from the hearings, and I hope to see that this year again. At its November 20th business meeting, the board will take action to approve three things. Number one, fiscal year 2027 capital budget appropriation request. Number two, the fiscal year 2027 state capital improvements program request. And number three, the fiscal year 2027 to 2032 capital improvement program. So that is the overview of the process and timeline. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Taylor for today's presentation.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about follow up to the presentation that we gave yesterday to talk about our capital improvements program. I just want to briefly touch on one thing before I hand it over to the experts and say that there are many hands that go into the development of the capital improvements program. And in addition to a very hardworking and dedicated staff, and you'll hear from them today, we also hear a lot of voices from our community, and that is important feedback that goes into this process. Granted, I'm relatively new coming back to Montgomery County, but I've really enjoyed reading a lot of the reports that came from our cluster coordinators in PTA and the very detailed responses that they provided to give us some additional context and insights into the capital improvements program. And I'm proud to say that their comments feature prominently in our plans for the future. One of the highlights from yesterday's presentation, and you'll see it again today, is that it's difficult for us to encapsulate solutions to some of our very longstanding and difficult challenges in just a six-year window, and that we actually have to look beyond that six-year window to really the next couple decades. This is a big conversation. It's an intricate conversation, but one that I know that the board is passionate about and passionate about finding some solutions to improve the learning environment for all of our kids and for our staff. So with that, it is my pleasure to pass things over to our Chief Operations Officer, Adnan Mamun, our Deputy Chief of Operations for Facility Management, Andrea Swayatoka, and DJ Connolly, who is our director who supervises this work. And thank you very much for being here, and we look forward to your presentation.
Good morning. Good morning. Thanks for the introduction, Dr. Taylor. We wanted to quickly go over the highlights of the recommended CIP that Dr. Taylor introduced last night. The request for major investment, as Dr. Taylor mentioned last night, is $2.7 billion. And then the CIP includes our new prioritization framework that is based on building condition, utilization, and educational adequacy, and then benchmarking for the next 20 years to get us back to the equilibrium that Dr. Taylor mentioned. Countywide initiatives, this CIP includes investment in holding schools, early childhood centers, alted sites, as well as regional support and operational facilities. And then considerations for energy efficient morgue organization over replacing our existing buildings. And then it also includes a recommendation for countywide elementary boundary study to reduce split articulation that aligns to the new high school patterns that we're currently studying with the Woodward and Crown Boundary Studies. So just a quick overview, our goal today would be to go over our enrollment information. As presented by Dr. Taylor last night, our enrollment is declining. We'll go over a little bit more detail on that today and provide an overview on the funding and then facility data and prioritization. And we'll go into the details of the individual major school projects that we have in our CIP and as well as other educational facility projects. And then we plan to come back and continue our discussion on the November 4th about the Silver Spring International Middle School, district-wide infrastructure projects, details about our systemic projects, technology morgue organization, as well as any follow-up information from the public comments that we receive. And as Dr. Taylor mentioned last night, this aligns with our strategic goal number three. And then our capital investments make sure that we have morgueized, accessible, and sustainable facilities and provide equitable opportunities for all of our students, and then obviously provide safe and healthy workplace for every student and staff member. Before we begin our presentation today, just a quick reminder, when we came back, came here last year, we did talk about what we were going to do for this CIP cycle, which included a commitment to develop a detailed six-year systemic plan covering all infrastructure components. And then we did talk about updating our FCIs, which were a few years old at that point. And then we did talk about that we're going to go forward with performing feasibility studies for projects that will help us align our budgets better to our CIP. With that, I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Connolly to talk about our enrollment.
All right. Good morning, and more importantly, happy CIP season. This is a very, very happy time for our office and a very, you know, our communities really look forward to the CIP season as well. So I'm going to walk you through some of our enrollment growth over the last 75 years. The first era you can see is the baby boom era. From 1950 to 1972, we had to take a double look at this, but we actually built 155 schools during that time due to the massive enrollment growth. And then the next era was naturally the baby bust era. So you can see over just 11 years, rapid enrollment decline, and we actually had to close 60 schools. Enrollment increased due to regional growth, where we built or reopened 47 schools over about a two-decade period. And then our recent history is we built or reopened 13 schools, you know, with also enrollment growth over these last, you know, 15 to 20 years, which brings us to where we are today. Post-pandemic, we are operating 211 schools, and then once Woodward and Crown come online, we will be at 213. I want to walk you through some of the live birth data, which leads to kindergarteners and some capture rates. So you can see right now from the 2020 year, there were 11,667 live births. And what that does is that translates, you know, five years later, six years later to kindergarteners. So there were over 11,000 live births in Montgomery County, and it yielded less than 10,000 kindergarteners. And if you look below that number, that 11,667 number, you can see that we're actually decreasing the next few years. So if there's less live births, there's typically less kindergarteners going to come in into our school system. And we're going to review, you know, some recent, very recent history and where our projections are leading us. So you can see back in 2017, we were at over 161,000, and we ballooned up to 165,267 students. That is when the COVID-19 pandemic hit, and we had a sharp decrease in enrollment. Then we went up a little bit a few years later, and we sort of plateaued, and now we are where we are. We are continuing to see enrollment decline because of those live births. And you can see where we are headed in the next six years. We are anticipating a loss of over 6,000 students, 6,000 to 7,000 students. So we expect to see the enrollment to continue to decline. Going to give a quick funding overview, some of these slides you have seen before in many, many CIPs, but it is important to know where we get our dollars for the capital budget. So our largest revenue source in the CIP comes from our general obligation bonds, which are determined by the spending affordability guidelines, which we'll dive into a little bit later. We also receive state aid. We receive the state aid based off of very, very complex formulas, which I would be happy to describe later. Yes, and we also receive some money in our capital budget from various taxes, whether it's the impact tax or recordation tax, as well as current revenue. And these are the same dollars that also go to our operating budget, and they are very specific on what they can be used for in the capital budget. So you can see tech mod, relocatables, and facility planning. This sort of gives you a breakdown percentage-wise of the different funding sources. So as I said, the GO bonds are the primary source, the primary funding source for our CIP. And you can see the different taxes, the current revenue, and a large part is our state aid, which is at 21%. It's important to note, our current approved amended CIP, six-year total was 1.76 billion, which is roughly $293 million per year. This number is important. These are the various funding sources by year. So you can see some years were very heavy in GO bonds, some years were heavy in state aid. A lot of that deals with Built to Learn, which we can talk about a little bit later as well. But the approved CIP, again, you can see averages 293 million a year. Dr. Taylor's recommended CIP is 2.7 billion, which equals 450 million a year. And the hard truth, I don't have a canary with me, but the hard truth is we need about $5.2 billion for our six-year CIP, which is 858 million per year. Now, it would fluctuate, obviously, but that's roughly the average. All right. So this is our spending affordability guidelines for our GO bonds. Right now, it's set at $1.8 billion over the six-year CIP. That will have another vote in February. But you can see that we are at the same funding levels as we were from the 2009, 2014 CIP. And this is not going to shock anybody, but things are a little bit more expensive right now than they used to be. So the dollars just do not go as far. The needs are there, but the dollars do not extend as far as they used to go. So we did plateau. We maxed out a little bit over $2 billion in the FY 17 to '22 CIP. So why isn't MCPS funded, fully funded, the way it should be? Well, like many other taxpayers in this county, I also enjoy other things besides MCPS and our lovely schools. We love our roads, we love our parks, and we love all the services that we receive here in this great county. So this sort of breaks down the different project totals, project meaning we're a project. We receive 23.9% of the county's capital budget, where transportation actually is the number one cost share, which is at 26.8. So while we are a very, very, very large school system, and we have tons of needs, we're actually not the largest cost share for the county. All right, state aid, here we go. This is our 2027 state CIP request. At the bottom right, you can see it's $49.263 million, and above that number, you can see how the request came about. So at the top, we have Crown High School, and that is to represent the balance of construction funding that is owed to us. So what the state does is they'll give us a maximum state allocation, which was $98 million, but they're not going to give us $98 million at once, because quite frankly, we don't get $98 million per any fiscal year. We're aiming to be around 40 to hopefully 42 million dollars this year. So it would not make any sense for us to get all of our state dollars for one project and exhaust it in one year. So we spread that over a multi-year plan, but this is the last year. That last 11.2 million that we're requesting would be the finality of that project. Very, very excited to announce that we are requesting a net zero energy add-on, which we've never done before. And this is for the Burtonsville Elementary School Replacement Project. I'm still trying to find out if we're the first one ever, but this is definitely a first for MCPS. Also want to highlight Burtonsville, because if you look at the different columns, the total estimated cost for the project was a little over 59 million. Non-PSCP funds, public school construction projects, that is our local funds. So if you do the math, we are paying less than 50% from our local budget. More than 50%, this is the first time we've ever done this, would be coming from the state. This is a huge accomplishment, and we are very excited. We'll see if it goes through, but this is our first in MCPS history. Also, we applied for some design funding for the Early Childhood Center Number Three, which actually is the existing Burtonsville Elementary. Typically, in years past, we've applied for design and construction in the same year. This is just to give the state a heads up, saying next year, we're going to apply for more construction funding for that project, but that's why the dollar amount is so low. Let's see. The rest below that line would be for our systemic maintenance projects, which are our large HVAC replacements and our roof replacements. There is a footnote, or should be a footnote there. Actually, it says cost increase besides Mattsonaga and Charles R. Drew. We applied for state aid, we were approved for state aid, but then we got our costs, our bids back, and they were much more expensive than we anticipated. So we are re-requesting additional funds. So that is why they are listed as a cost increase. All right. So this is a quick snapshot. I don't have a huge spreadsheet like Dr. Taylor did last night, but it's all the same. It still equals $2.7 billion. Once you look at the CIP online, you will see a much more detailed version of this. But essentially, our individual school projects are at the top, which are your But essentially, our individual school projects are at the top, which are your single-school projects. Our countywide projects, we will go into a little bit later, hopefully today. If not, we'll go over the second work session. The largest countywide project we have is our major capital projects, which is an umbrella project of some of our replacements, our renovations and renewals. So you can see a large portion come from those countywides. We're going to touch on, you can see some negative appropriations for FY 2027, such as Highland View and Bethesda Chevy Chase, Walter Johnson Cluster Elementary, and we'll go into that a little bit later.
All right. Thank you, DJ. So I'm going to take us through the facility data and prioritization. We can either pause now for some questions, or I can go through this section, and then it might be a good opportunity to talk about the last three sections before we move to the individual projects.
I think that would be helpful.
You will be helpful, too. It's a very long presentation. Let's break it up for questioning. Okay. So most, but each section will go two rounds. So one question, one comment, colleagues. So for the first part, I'm seeing lights. I'm going to start from my right-hand side, Ms. Stewart.
Sure. If we could go to the GO bond spending affordability guidelines, there we go. So this is always very interesting. But these are also the six-year plan for... So what happens is, for our listening public, for every two years, we relook at this, and it gets adjusted. So even if it said FY '17 through '22, 2.04 billion, if you actually went back and added those years up, I doubt you'd get to that number, because then, the next two years, you can see, it got reduced to 1.86, knowing that they probably reduced. So what I would love to see is a year by year, not just like what came to MCPS, but because this is, the GO bond spending affordability guidelines is for the whole county. This is not just MCPS money, right? I just think it would be nice to see the actual, what happened in each of those years for the entire GO bond, and then also, it's actually even not as important to see where each of those years went to MCPS, because they move money around from GO bond to recordation tax. Really, it's like this whole pot of money, right? And so it's not even as important where the money came from, but it is important to see what actually happened in these years, because we keep adjusting, and that actually affects us, because it means we keep having to adjust. Anyway, thank you so much. And by the way, this is a great, I love these graphs. And I want to say, Happy Capital Budget Day, because I actually do celebrate this every year. And I love my book that I get, and I know some people actually try to fight for them. So there are other people out there that actually look forward to this day. Thanks.
Ms. Wolf.
Yeah, I just want to understand that when you indicate that the kindergarten numbers are going down based on the birth rate. Well, we have pre-K, too. So where in this is pre-K?
I mean, it would show, pre-K is certainly the year before kindergarten, but in Appendix A is where you can start to see our enrollment, and pre-K is actually listed out in there. We do not currently provide enough seats, certainly for all of the pre-K. So it's a hard number to sort of compare directly to kindergarten, but that is certainly a long-term goal, is to continue to add more pre-K.
Yeah, I just wanted to know whether or not we were considering that when we were considering the enrollment numbers when we project for the future.
It is included in the 156,000.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Pre-K is in there.
The other thing is, and this is just something that I fully understand, but I'm not sure everybody else does. When you have HVAC phase one, two, and three, people think when we replace HVAC, we've actually replaced it. Can you talk a little bit about the different phases and why it appears like that?
Yes, happy to. And we can get into more of this in detail, too, at the work session on the fourth, but...
If you're going to discuss it later, it's fine.
I'll do a high level, since you asked the question. So it's different for each of the different schools because of the size of the facilities. So in elementary school, and when we say phase, it typically is referring to a summer. So for an elementary school, if it's a smaller school, like Monocacy that we did this summer, that is probably about the size that we can complete in one summer. That is really tough for us to do in eight weeks. For a larger elementary, it might take us two summers. So we would consider that two phases over, you know, 2027 and 2028. For a middle school, the size of those facilities, it takes us at least two summers, if not three, depending on the size of the facility. And for a high school, it takes us typically, on average, about four summers. So you'll see, actually, because we have shown our spend plan, and it's available for the public online through the exhibits that we provided, you will see a couple high schools scattered, and each of their different phases are shown in each of the different fiscal years. If we ask for the high school all-in-one, that takes up about $35 million of the HVAC. And so we have strategically spread those across, to sort of align with how we're going to spend the money, because we cannot do a high school, middle school project all in one summer. So if you think of phase, think of it as a summer project.
I think that's helpful for the public, because they think that it has been replaced.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. And actually, we can leave this slide up. Just, and again, partially for the community's clarification. So when we're looking at these numbers, and we're incorporating them into projected enrollment, and then we're here looking at facilities and planning and utilization, all of these, you know, 10,896 live births from 2023 were not just from one area in the county. Do we look at that as well in terms of, well, and I don't know if we even have access to that data, but in this part of the county, 1,000 babies were born this year, but in this part of the county, 10 were born. And that might affect the enrollment at various schools versus others.
So we do have access to that, but also, people move. So it's kind of hard to project, but the county planning department creates a student generation rate, which actually is a projection of how many students would be yielded from different housing types in specific areas of the county. So what happens in Silver Spring might be different in Damascus. What happens in Olney might be different than Bethesda. So there are pockets that the county planning board decides with the student generation rate. So it's different throughout the county.
Okay. But we do acknowledge, obviously, families move, especially depending on rent prices and the way that housing works here. Is there a way that myself and the community can access that information from the planning board? Is that on their website somewhere, do you know?
Yeah, I believe so. We'll get back to you on that, though.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll follow up.
Ms. Rivera Owens.
Actually, following on that, if we can go to the enrollment reality projection, because this tells a lot about what happened and was going to happen. But to Mrs. Montoya's point, one of the things that I'm noticing is, so we had about a decrease between 2019 and today. Is it about 17,000 students, or did I do my math wrong? Okay, my teacher would be very proud, Ms. Puffer, at cases for high school. And then, if you look at us now to year 31, it's not about 17,000 students, but still it's a pretty steep number. So to Mrs. Montoya's point about geography, and this is something that I'm very interested in, as representing the UP County, the development of areas have also changed a lot in the last 15 years in our county, and are changing more in the next 10 years of projections. So where do we intercept those projections of development, birth rates, demographically, when we are putting projects in the future together? Where is the intersection? Because I can tell you, the UP County, it is and has been developed, whether it's in Cluxburg, but now there's a huge development going on in Damascus, and we have a lot of gentrification that has happened in the Down County, in areas of Wheaton or Twinbrook and other areas, where people then start moving to areas where they can afford, right? It's not very easy to live in Montgomery County, where they can afford rent or at least a townhouse and so on. So are we taking into account all those different ingredients when we're looking at projecting all these projects?
So our demographer, Ms. O'Hara, definitely takes into account the pipeline development where communities are being built. We do not project demographics. We just do current, because that's going to change year by year.
I'm sorry, I meant geographics. Maybe I misspoke.
So like affordable housing and things like that. So we can follow up, but we definitely have the pipeline development information when projects are starting, when they're anticipated to be opened, and things of that nature. Because we are building still throughout the county, even though our enrollment is declining. So we acknowledge that.
And also, I know the planning department doesn't think that children live in apartment buildings. And I just want to say for the record, I grew up in an apartment building, many of us have. And can we please keep in mind that children live and grow up in apartment buildings? Regardless of, you know, the wishful thinking of many in this county might want to be, that's not really the reality of the folks.
And we fully acknowledge that. And not only do we have pipeline development, but we actually have historical trends and recent trends. Sort of to your point, we saw a bunch of the newcomers coming into the burnt mills area that wasn't expected, but now we are projecting for that. So there are pockets of the county where these situations happen, and we adjust as fast as we can.
Thank you. Ms. Sylvester.
Yes, a comment and a question along these same themes, and Dr. Taylor mentioned it yesterday, about our international student enrollment. It has been about 2,000 students a year since the pandemic, close to it. And so that's enough to fill a school. This year, it's about cut down by 50%. So I think that is emphasizing, kind of maybe it was keeping our enrollment steady or slightly declining, and now that's cut by 50%. Now we're seeing an even steeper percentage drop. However, in terms of the other point that he made about pre-K, even though we have less students attending our schools, we do want to expand our pre-K enrollment, and that has been a huge CIP issue, because where we don't have enough classrooms to put all the pre-K classrooms, well, now we might be able to adjust and be able to fit more of our pre-K and be able to, you know, meet that strategic priority. And then a simple question on the Burtonsville, you were very excited about the net-zero add-on, and I don't know what that is, so if you could explain that to me, I would greatly appreciate it.
Sure. Sorry if I was too excited. Anytime there's a first, and it's a positive first, we like to get excited around here. But this is a new funding add-on that the state, the IAC started, I believe, last year or two years ago. But essentially, we designed the building to be net-zero ready. So, and I actually probably shouldn't have Andrea talk about it. Okay. But we designed it to be net-zero ready, and the state, it obviously costs a little bit more to do that. So they're adding an additional up to 5% of the project cost. So that 2.7 million is indicative of the 5% of our maximum state allocation. So we are hopeful we get that 2.7. It's up to 5%. But I'll let the architect talk about, you know, that.
Maybe, so the basic thing to think about for net zero is that you are consuming the same amount of energy that you are producing onsite. So you design it in such a way, we have geothermal wells, a very efficient mechanical is typically your highest-consuming energy of a facility. And the envelope, the exterior, becomes very tight, so you don't have extensive leakage, and then we will have solar panels. So that's what it's been designed to. As you all know, we're going to move from capital budget season to operating budget season, right? And our utilities are a huge operating expense for us. So this is something we need to be moving. This is a strategy many school districts are using. The state realizes that. They're incentivizing us to do more of these projects, which ultimately would help our operating budget.
Okay. Thank you. My comment will be, I would like to re-show the slide, MCPS growth, the last 75 years. So looks like from the 1983 to 2005, we grow 50 schools in 20 years' span? That looks like what has been done. And then, after that, we continue to grow. So we do have a lot more, a larger footprint to care for, to maintain and build. Okay. And then, so my question will be, on your funding chart, you have a capital improvement program funding source that has bonds, state aid, taxes, and current revenue. I want to, are we going to dive deeper into state aid? My question will be, what are the state aids that we are leveraging? What are some other opportunities we can look at? What are some advocacy points for the Board of Education to be engaged on?
Certainly. So right now, our cost share is 50%. Some LEAs, some school districts are up to 100%, meaning their school projects are 100% funded. Our systemic renovations typically receive all 50%, if not a little bit more. There are additional add-ons besides net-zero energy, but concentration of poverty. There are additional add-ons for special education. There are add-ons for a variety of CTE programs, because they require more space. So that's part of the funding formula that they do. That's mainly for individual projects, but the systemics are a little bit more cut and dry. They're 50%, and then there is a little add-on sometimes for concentration of poverty and things like that. There are state grants for safety, and that we are exploring right now. Our security office applied for some grants for that, in the tune of, I believe, $1.5 million. So there are other state opportunities for different avenues, but this is purely systemic renovation and school construction.
Thank you for that information. So I think we need to explore all options. I think in 2027, they have a Nancy Cobb construction type of money, so I would like us to take a look. That starts in 2023, pass in 2027, you will start this kind of funding. And we do need to take a look at the state share capital formula and explore that with different, our state delegations, to see if there's any possibilities, looking at re-evaluating Montgomery County's wealth and our need in the county, to see if that can be moved and adjusted. All right. Thank you so much. Let's, Ms. Stewart.
It's just a clarification question. On the slide that says funding sources and approved amended CIP, and we have the GO bond, state aid, recordation tax, current revenue, school impact tax. And when I look at the state aid bars, and I look in the CIP, the state funding, many paragraphs that go over each year, it's not matching up for me. So if I could just get some clarification on that, because in FY '25, it says 93.6 million in the book, but then it says something different. And then even for FY '27, the state aid request is 49.26, but you can see the state aid on this chart looks very different. And anyway, thank you.
Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. It's a bit of a follow-up to Ms. Yang's. I just want to make sure I'm clear and the community is clear. So when the money's, at the state level, when there's money to be allocated, generally speaking, there's a formula that gets used to determine what counties get, and that's based on basically their socioeconomic levels, or the way they're perceived, in my opinion. Is that what happens here also when it comes to this type of funding? Are they still using that? And I forget, there's a fancy name for the formula they use. But is that also the same formula they're using in terms of allocating for CIP and these capital improvements? And if so, how long, if you're aware, how we've been trying to advocate for a change in that calculation to be what we believe may be in better alignment with the action in that calculation to be what we believe may be in better alignment with the actual levels of wealth and/or poverty in our county?
So we have been advocating for a few years now. I know that for a fact. The cost share that I was talking about before, the 50% versus some LEAs are at 100%. It's also the size of the, of the county or the school district. So there, there are a bunch of variables. I can tell you, we have had a much better relationship with the IAC, our, our state funding partner in recent past. We have met with them quite a bit, actually, even this summer. We told them and we showed them the hard truth. And to say their eyes were opened was a bit of a shock. And what this is actually going to allow us to do and for them to do is they are going to be able to advocate in, in Annapolis to say, hey, MCPs, our largest school system, has $740 million of backlog in HVAC. They have $175 million in backlog of, of roofing. They now know that information in a much more transparent way. So I'm, we have been, it has been a point of emphasis for us to establish a much better relationship with the IAC, be more transparent. I submitted the state CIP this year and they're like, wow, we've never gotten that form from MCPs before. It's not required, but you are going above and beyond in sharing your projected needs. So we are hopeful the information that we deliver to them. And they have been a great partner and have been willing to talk to you all if, if you would like. So we can definitely accommodate that at a future meeting. So we are, we are sort of starting to get on the same page, if you will. And we are definitely needing more in terms of cost share and overall allocation.
Well, wonderful. Well, thank you so much for you and any of your colleagues who have made those efforts. I can, you know, it sounds like it's going to be improving and I really appreciate that. That's a really important point when it comes to funding, whether it's CIP or anything else for our county. Thank you.
Plus one.
Okay, so let's continue with the presentation.
Great. So we are going to move into facility data and prioritization. This has quite a bit of meat in it. A lot of it was shared last night by Dr. Taylor as well. So we'll just emphasize a few of those points and then happy to pause again before we move into the individual projects, if that's helpful. So we certainly talked a lot about the declining enrollment. Ms. Yang started to hit on it though, right? Just because our enrollment might be declining does not mean that any of our assets and our facilities go away. We still are responsible to maintain all of those and have the best learning environment for our students. So here is sort of the chalkboard of what we currently operate and maintain as a school district. 238 facilities, that equates to almost 28 million square feet that we are responsible for on a day-to-day basis. And that is really important as we think about the math in terms of what is needed for capital improvement. And we've also shared over the last six weeks, as we've started to tee up a lot of these conversations, right, that the importance of us thinking about the expected useful life of these systems. We've sort of gotten in the habit of running them for too long until they sort of crash and we get into this emergency state. And how do we get ourselves out of that? And what this bar chart is really showing, right, is that depending on the asset, they have very different expected useful life. An elevator versus painting versus a certain type of flooring versus walls all vary. And that needs to be taken into account as we think and plan for our systemic projects as well as our renovation, renewal, and replacement projects. Over the last couple of weeks, we have also talked a lot. We have a brand-new website where we have posted the current facility condition assessments that are available in our first round of schools that were completed. That ties into the facility condition number and the depleted value. We've also talked about the lifecycle benchmarks. We need to get into more of this renovation renewal process where around that 25-year mark, we are considering and grouping projects together. We are doing an HVAC, a roofing, a plumbing, a restroom project, all in one at a school. It's really not until you get to closer to that 50-year mark that we need to be considering either a replacement or a renewal. And the difference between that renewal and the renovation is a renewal, you are, you are gutting that inside. You are going to keep, whether it's a concrete or steel structure or masonry, you're going to keep that brick and mortar, but everything else comes down to the bare bones. Versus the renovation, you might keep a lot of the walls, but you are taking out those old systems, the failing HVAC, replacing the roof, because those don't make it to the 50-year mark. And so that's really the, the big difference between those two. And then certainly, if the facility is just crumbling, we then consider the replacement So we've broken this down for further consideration, thinking about elementary versus secondary. And we've shared, you know, in the past that we have 60% of our elementaries that are eligible for a renovation, renewal, and replacement. We only have a handful of schools that are actually eligible for that, more of that replacement. But on average, as we think about the next 20 years, and that's really what the CIP is meant to do, is to set us up really long-term planning, not just the six years, but what do we need to be doing over the next 20 years? We should be renovating, renewing, and replacing six to seven elementary. And we have some more chalkboard slides coming up for you all with some of those data pieces. If we think about that same scenario for the secondary, so this includes our middle school and high schools, we, you know, the middle of our portfolio is in that 26 to 50-year range, that 31 schools. So on average, we should be renovating, renewing, and replacing two to three secondary schools per year over the next 20 years. Wanted to just share, you know, the comptroller issued a recent state report, statewide report, looking at all of the LEAs in the state of Maryland. On the left, you can see the statewide FCI, which is that facility condition index number and the depleted value. Across the state, it's an average of .52. And remember, the higher up you go, the worse the facility condition. So this is not a goal of getting to 100. You want to go in the opposite direction. So it's, it's good. We do fall, we should be proud. We do fall slightly below the state average, but our average is .491. So still not in a great shape, but as compared to the rest of the state. And so what do we need to do to improve our overall facility condition index? All right, so we're going to walk through a, a little bit more math and sort of what we should be doing over the next 20 years. So if we take our 238 facilities, again, this includes our elementary, our secondary schools also includes all of our holding centers, all the other facilities that we occupy for special schools, where our central service staff are. If we take that 50 years of useful life, on average, we need to be, and this is specific to replacement, not a renewal or renovation, we should be replacing about five buildings, and I call them buildings because we're thinking of the 238 per year. We're going to break that down for elementary. So on the left, we have applied, we've averaged our 138, or sorry, 137 elementary school facilities. On average, it's about 82,000 square feet for an elementary school. We have certainly some larger and smaller than that. If we apply the overall total costs or dollar per square foot of a renovation at that specific square footage, and this is also in today's costs, so every day this goes up and every year we need to add escalation, you'll see those numbers, what a renovation or renewal and a replacement looks like on the left. If we then go to the right chalkboard and assume we need to do at least six elementary schools every year, and it'll be, it should be a combination of the renovation, renewal, replacement, right? Not everyone is at that 50-year mark, some are 32, and so they should be having a renovation. But we need to be funding in the range of 221 million to 345 million per year just for elementary schools. Take that same math methodology and apply it to middle schools. The average of a middle school around 150,000 square feet, you can apply that for the different dollars per square foot of a renovation or renewal replacement. Move over to the right chalkboard, we should be completing a combination of a renovation, renewal, replacement. So just to kind of play that out even further, it might, one year it might be two renovations, the next year it might be a renovation, renewal, the next year it might be a renewal replacement. That's sort of what we're talking about here. We need to be doing a combination of those, two per year. And if you apply those dollar amounts, we're talking 135 million to 210 million per year. Currently, we don't have any replacement projects or renovations happening at the middle school level. So it sort of tells you where we are. High school, we operate 25 current high schools. The average high school, it's much, much larger, right, of your square footage. On average, it's 322,000. You can see the dollars per square foot of a renovation, renewal, replacement, and we should be doing a combination of at least one of those per year. And the dollar amount just keeps going up as a high school is far more expensive. Okay, so this year, as we started to develop the CIP, we really wanted to take into account the building condition as a primary indicator, right? And so that is why we have had a third-party assessor out. And they will be completing all facilities over the course of this school year to have a facility condition assessment. That is where your FCI information comes from. It is also really important, while that is the primary factor, as we think about it's weighted at 50% of our CIP prioritization, there are other key components that need to be considered. So 25% of our consideration was the educational adequacy. Do all of the classrooms have access to daylight? While quite a few do, we still have some schools that don't, right? We have some that have interior classrooms that have no windows to the outside. That was taken into account. We took into account the air quality. We have, we call them IQ sensors in all of the classrooms, which is a really amazing project. And we use that data to help look at the condition of that facility. And then classroom size, we compared the existing square footage of the classroom to what it should be. Is it really under what that educational specification is designed for? We're also taking into account the enhanced student needs. And I know we list FARM's data in there, but it's really taking into account the student population at that school, our additional supports needed and required in that school, thus requiring additional facility needs. And then building utilization as the last one, really looking at, you know, is it overutilized? And does it have enough capacity? So that was all taken into account as we developed the prioritization. And this is just the prioritization, we've definitely gotten this comment a lot from folks over the last six weeks. This was just our consideration for anyone to receive a renovation, renewal, and replacement. As you can see online and in the book, we will absolutely continue to do the county-wide, the systemic projects, just because they don't fall in this list of prioritization, does not mean they're not eligible for an HVAC project or a roof project or others. So here is where the first round of schools landed. Those in the sort of light orange color are secondary schools, followed by the, the elementary schools in the white. I think it is really important to note that this is not a fixed list. This is what we are presenting to you for the FY '27 CIP, and it was our foundation for consideration. Facility conditions change. We are going to continue to assess the buildings, update the facility condition assessments over time, and this list will adjust as the condition within the facility changes. And so just because as of today, you show, you know, 19 on the list, when conditions change in two years, that does not mean the list cannot be adjusted and accounted for. Okay, so maybe I'll pause for that before we jump into individual projects.
Thank you. And this time for questions or comment, I'm going to start from my left-hand side. Ms. Zimmerman?
Sorry, I'm wrapping up all of my copious notes. Could you please give a little bit more context of facility conditions that lead to renewal versus renovation versus replacement beyond just age of the building? And then plus, how it relates to the FCI? I know that was a lot, that was meaty.
No, that's a great question. Actually, one thing that you'll see in our systemics that we have done with the renovation is one year a school might get an HVAC project in FY '23. And then in FY '25, they got a roof project. And then in FY '26, they got a restroom project. Clearly, all of those were needed. We sort of piecemealed it one after the other. Part of the goal is the renovation, right? Is they clearly need five-plus systems. And we say five-plus because that allows them to be eligible for state funding. That is key, right? Restrooms currently are not an eligible state funding. But if we bundle five systems together, then they can be eligible for state funding. Instead of doing one this summer and another one two summers later and another one the next summer, right? That's a lot on the school for us to constantly be in and out. The idea with the renovation would be, clearly, they're over the 25-year mark. Again, maybe they're, they're 32 years old. They need a lot of these improvements. Let's bundle them together. Let's move them into a holding school for a year and let's do a lot of these projects. You're going to come back. It is not going to be a brand-new building, but it is going to feel darn close to it. And it, you know, adding new ceiling tile, light fixtures, paint, flooring, HVAC, it truly will feel to most people like a brand-new building. And that's really the goal, as opposed to like piecemealing it each summer, is to do a more comprehensive, without doing a full renewal and replacement. We can do a lot more projects if we're doing some of these one-year renovation projects. That is where we would like to get to as we move forward with the CIP. Did I answer your question?
I think the renewal and, and the renewal is not explained. What is a renewal?
The renewal is when you are taking the inside and you are gutting it. So you're leaving nothing but the structure.
Yeah. Just very quickly, down to the studs. You're keeping the outside of the building, and so the physical structure on the outside might have some small augmentations or some small changes, like you, you might need to bump out a, a particular wall or a wing or something like that. But the insides of the building would be gutted down to the bare walls behind it. It really would be a complete interior redesign.
I think it would be helpful to contextually for us to see where our needs are. Like the list of, like, you know, we were saying 162 schools are 25 years or older. That would mean that some of them are eligible for renovations, some renewal, some replace. Like, I get that that's kind of the whole meat of it, but I, I think for us to get an idea of some of these schools have been renovated, that they're not, that the needs there are not as strong as they are in some of the schools, I think some greater context for that could also be helpful. And again, that's a big, like, ask, I'm not asking for it right now.
And when we review the individual major capital projects, we can kind of describe why certain projects were deemed to be a replacement versus a renewal? Because they're definitely in there. So we'll get to that.
Thank you.
That's good. Ms. Manu?
Hi. So adding on to that, I was going to ask if you could explain sprinkling. I know Dr. Taylor explained what we did in the past with that and how that fits into the criteria ranking prioritization for the system.
You go for it.
Yeah, so a good example of that would be Highland View Elementary that we're going to actually get to in a moment as we're proposing a change in what was previously considered for that, right? We've done a few, you know, a little addition here or there. And the proposed project that was previously proposed for Highland View, while it might have added classrooms and solved that, it didn't solve many of the other challenging needs at that site there. It's too small, the multipurpose room doesn't solve all the issues there. So we're sort of going in, we're doing a little bit, solving one need, but not universally solving all of the needs that are there.
And adding on to that, I was curious about how we will be tracking the CIP projects in the future for accountability's sake, if, for example, renovation is done or renewal is done, but something more is needed in the future right after.
Hopefully, if we are doing our jobs correctly, something more is not needed. That's a great question, though. We do provide our website, our capital projects, where we do try to keep everyone in the community updated on where we stand in the process of design and construction.
Okay.
Ms. Sylvester?
Yeah. I wanted you to kind of help the public understand with a school like Eastern, we have heard a lot of advocacy from Eastern families throughout the years and educators and staff as well. But for the public, maybe they play basketball there with their kids because of community use of public facilities. Maybe they've gone to an event there. Looks pretty good to me. Can you help us understand why these cosmetic improvements have kept the space livable, but why this is needed at this time for this school?
Yeah, that's a great question.
We are going to go through after this section, each project one by one. So it might be helpful to do that when we've got more of the Eastern information.
But again, I want you to speak to the public, like, what is wrong with this structure? That I just visited and it looks pretty good to me, not me, I mean, saying, average person that may step foot in this school. So if you're going to do that later, that's fine.
I'll keep, try to keep it, we can touch more when we get to the Eastern. But I think sometimes everyone's reaction to a facility when you walk in is the aesthetics. Does the paint look okay, right? Is the ceiling okay? What the facility condition index is doing is really looking at everything that's sort of behind the walls. Yes, it is still taking into account lighting and flooring that you visually see. But one of the reasons, you know, Eastern's facility condition index is so high, right, is thinking about the electrical. What keeps that building running is the switchgear, which is your main electrical distribution. It's very old and not functioning properly, right? It's your HVAC. It's really your mechanical, your electrical, and your plumbing, in addition to your structure, that drive that facility condition index really high. Those are not always things that you see when you walk into facilities, right? Those are not the aesthetic part of it. And so it's, that's why it's And so it's, that's why it's so important to have that third-party and that system, sort of, I mean, going into the boiler room, going up on the roof. Those are the pieces that, when the power goes out in a facility, while you don't see that, you experience it as an occupant.
And I think Dr. Taylor has explained that it doesn't, some of these things are so old that you can't find the parts to replace them. It costs more to continue to fix, put the duct tape and the chewing gum. And so that's why some of these projects rise to the top.
Thank you.
Okay, Grace.
Thank you. So first, I'm really glad that the system hired a third-party assessor. I think that was a great move. But I'm just curious also, the assessing, when we're looking at these schools, the usage of the school is not just by students. So there is another usage, which is by public facilities. So I'm curious to know, were those two intercept in a sense? Because I know, for example, up county, we have very little room for things to do, for people to gather, and so the uses of the school facilities, especially like the Damascus area, right, is high. So I really would like to kind of educate the public and even some other folks about the fact that we just don't have students in our schools, but those school facilities are open to the public for many things, including, you know, other, the sports facilities, or our grounds, and so on. That get heavily used, right? I want to know how that was taken into account in this report? And if we can also do a guide of, these are the most-used school facilities in the county for public use. Okay? This is how often, you know, the public have access to our schools. And then, for me, because I'm very visual, for me, it's very helpful to say, okay, so the life of roofing is this long. Because I saw cases where high school, I can tell you as an alumni who kind of supported the rebuilding of cases where high school, people are going to be like, we just built that school. That should not be a problem. So I think it would be helpful, when we are putting all these schools, to say how old the roof is, how old the HVAC is. You mentioned the boiler rooms. People don't even think about that. The electrical, I, I'm going back to a situation that happened this summer. I walk into Smith Elementary, you know, I'm just driving, I see all these fire trucks going into Watkins Smith Elementary. There was an electrical fire. So you would think it would be, and, you know, somewhere in the walls. It was on the stage. Because that school is so old, and the electrical is old, that it was, you know, in the stage, and water, they were cleaning, water got into it, and behold, behold, this fire just showed up, right? And, but that's not how we build things anymore. So they were trying to figure out how to find whatever that little part is to be able to fit that, because it was built decades ago, and they couldn't find that to be able to do this. So there's so many parts to it that I think is really important to tell the story chronologically. And to tell me, you know, cases where high school, yes, although it's a brand-new school, the life of the roofing is this long. But also for me, as a taxpayer, and as a member of this community, to know that my schools are not just used for my children to be in school, but they are accessible to the whole community, to use the gyms, they use electricity, they use HVAC, right? So all of that has tear and tearing into the usage of our schools. So can you give me that? If you have it, sorry.
I would say we don't have offhand, you know, which facilities use the most by the public, but we can certainly work with CUF to try to pull some data and come back to you. I think where that's also taken into account, you know, one of our systemic projects includes refinishing of gymnasium floors. Doesn't mean that the wood floor needs to be replaced, but often, it would probably tie to those gymnasiums that get used heavily, not just from the school, but the community that probably need to be refinished earlier than others. And I think that's where you see some of that play in.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf.
I think that Ms. Rivera Oven's question is excellent, because many of the buildings I know over in the Northeast Consortium are even used for church on Sunday. So I think it's very important that people know that we keep these buildings up, not just for the school use, but for the community use. My question is a little bit more esoteric, but I think you might want to talk a little bit about declining enrollment versus fixing all these buildings. And help people to see that, yes, you may go down by 2,000 kids, but that's a sprinkling over 200 buildings. And so it's not one building.
Yeah, I can start, and feel free to add in. I think that's really important for people to understand, you know, for so long, for the last couple of decades, right? Montgomery County has been chasing capacity, and we've been building either new schools or additions to account for that. At this point, we are, in some ways, in a really great place, because we don't have to worry about that. We should consider non-capital actions as part of the boundary study we are in, and future boundary studies, to account for shifts in population across the county. But we have the ability to spend more of our capital money to maintain the existing facilities that our students are in. And that's really what the goal of all of this is. We need to keep maintaining the 238 facilities that we have.
And I just want to make one point to Ms. Silvestri's question. I think the reason our buildings look good is because we have excellent maintenance crews, because they keep them clean and painted.
Thank you for that comment. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo Ms. Wolf and Ms. Rivera Oven about the public use, because I see it all the time, where you're driving somewhere. And having made those reservations as a community member, I was surprised at how cheap it is. And I don't know what percentage of that money actually comes to the school system, or how all of that works, but it always struck me that we're maintaining all of these things for use, things that I know scuff marks from volleyball practice, from the recreational team, or basketball, or their kids. Kids do things they're not supposed to do sometimes, and, right? And yet, we're supposed to be on the hook for fixing all the things. So I think that would definitely be useful, perhaps, in just engaging in some discussions with CUPF and the county generally. But I also wanted to ask, so recently, Delegate David Moon, who is a District 20 delegate, was on a podcast called I Hate Politics Podcast. And he was talking specifically about funding for school building, partially, I think, in response to, or in conjunction with, Comptroller Lerman's report, and just general things that are going on that he's aware of. And what he said is that, basically, school systems should not get state money for building schools if there's a school nearby that has capacity, and that school boards should redraw boundaries to maximize facility utilization. So basically, if you want to add some portables, or some additions on to Bethesda Elementary, then perhaps we should look at capacity nearby at the schools. And if there's capacity there, if you want to build, great, but the state shouldn't foot the bill. And so I suspect that that may come up during legislative session. And I'm just wondering how we, because we are also in a boundary study, and program proposals, and various things, especially in an even tighter fiscal year than last year at the state level, how might we incorporate the idea of that now, so that we're not caught off-guard, perhaps, next fall, if something like that were to pass through the legislature, to say, oh, wait a minute, we didn't really orient ourselves to that approach? Or maybe we are, I'm not sure. But if we can just kind of speak to that proposition.
So, and DJ, please chime in. So currently, the way state looks at it, if we are requesting funds to increase capacity, two different things. One is the investment in the infrastructure. If it's more than 16 years old, before the state invested in that building, so let's say, the state paid us to replace a roof in year 2000, the state will not participate in replacing that roof money for 16 more years. So we cannot even ask for replacing that. So if we're renovating a building, and the state has not funded in those building components for 16 years, they will participate in renovating a building. However, when we do get to ask the state for capacity increase, the state will ask us to look at surrounding schools before they will participate. So any school that touches the boundary, so let's say, for example, Highland View, or any other schools, if there are nearby capacities, the state will ask us to say, you know, look at available seats. And if there are available seats, and we're saying we want to increase the capacity by 300, the state will come back and say, we will not participate in that.
So it's an existing practice.
Correct.
Right. But I guess, and so then perhaps this is just points to us needing to have some more conversations with our state-elected officials, because, and again, I have not looked into the issue beyond, but per Delegate Moon, some time ago, probably likely perhaps before all of us were here, per him, MCPS actually, and I think the word he used was lobbied, lobbied the state to have MCPS be an exemption to some sort of capacity or utilization requirement. And so, again, just per Delegate Moon, that's not something that happens now, and that's why he's proposing this. So again, I just want us to anticipate.
So I might be able to share just a little bit of context, and I do appreciate, I think, as you were, as a number of the questions have elevated, I think we can plan next time to do perhaps a better, or a fuller explication of some of the state aid variables, because there are a lot of variables, and they affect us in a lot of different ways. So I think we're happy to tee up a little bit of a deeper overview next time. But a little context for some of this, the state has its own calculation of capacity, right? So the state has standards for what is the capacity of a school. And that does not always align with our program capacity and our staffing standards. So for example, and I think this is where the lobbying may have come in back in the day, we have schools that have class size reduction initiatives, right? In which case, we have affirmatively, the board has made decisions to have a much lower class size for certain educational and equity reasons. The state doesn't recognize that. And so when we say, well, this school is overcapacity, the state says, no, it's not. You can put twice as many kids in that classroom. And we say, well, we don't do that. And so we wind up in, again, we're allowed to do that, but we won't get state support for the dollars. And so I think those are, that's just one example of some of the nuances between, you know, what the state eligibility and the state standards rules are. And again, the state's allowed to have those, but then the board also has some program decisions that don't always align with that in a way that allows us to maximize our state aid. We do maximize our state aid in the sense that we apply, and, thank you, DJ, and the rest of the team, we apply for every penny we absolutely can, but there are limitations on what we're going to get back. Some of it is programmatic, some of it is just how much money does the state have to distribute across the state in any one given year? And given our size, you know, we often are, that's not always going to work out for us. So I think, just again, a little context on the enrollment, but I also do think that, you know, I'm taking good notes on some of the questions here, and I think it might help us to do a little bit of a step back on the state aid process and some of these big-ticket issues that have been kind of back and forth for a number of years. And we can do that next time.
Okay. I just, I'm anticipating, I mean, he literally said he's working on introducing a bill, and I think Senator Lamb is going to be the co-sponsor from Howard County. And so I just, I anticipate, this isn't just like a talking point, you know, on a podcast. So I just want us to be able to brace ourselves for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stor.
My question is on page 34. And this gets back to a little bit of what Natalie was asking. There is a note that the FCI was the ranking, the secondary ranking factor after the total score. And so that, can you explain some of that? Because what we're going to have is that this slide will, you know, be shown for all these schools, and they'll see the ranking, they'll go and see, oh, who got in the budget? Who didn't get in the budget, and where they are? And we also have our framework, right, that showed the FCI was like 50% of the score, and then 25, I call that the lived experience in the school, and then the 12.5, 12.5. So if we could get a little more explanation about that comment.
Absolutely. It could be phrased a little differently, but perfect example is Burning Tree, Cold Spring, Highland View. They're all, their total score is 5.33. They are all tied, essentially. They were ranked, Burning Tree was ranked higher than Cold Spring because their FCI was higher. And the primary driver of the total score was that FCI score. So if a, if a school was tied in their overall total score, the next ranking factor was that FCI score. That was what that was supposed to mean.
That makes more sense. And so
We can work on the language on that.
What is, so can you explain what exactly go, but the total score that we see here, is that the result of the framework?
Yes. And we were planning to, in November 4th, come to you with more detail for each of the criteria.
Okay. Excellent. That helps a lot. And a quick follow-up about Ms. Montonia's question, sorry. So it is an unknown, I mean, it is known, actually, but it's not really stated anywhere that Montgomery County will get only a certain percentage of the total amount of money that's available in the state's capital budget. Actually dug around to see, oh, is this written anywhere? I don't think it's written anywhere. So, but could we just see, is there, can we get the history of the percentage of the state budget that we have gotten throughout the last few years? Thank you.
Thank you. If you are going to bring it in November 4th, then we can talk about it then. I have a question for page 33, the criterias for CIP prioritization, especially for the FCI. So one question is, one question is, a building have many different component, and one of the things the community is trying to understand, how do you come up with the FCI score? And a common question I get is, okay, my building's HVAC is broken, but I have beautiful grounds and sidewalk. Does that mean that, are those elements weighted equally?
That's a great question. So this is really just talking about the building itself, so grounds like that would not be weighted. And the way the FCI is generated is it's based on the cost of replacement.
Okay.
So if you have really old flooring, it might be very old, but because flooring is not as expensive to replace as an HVAC, or your electrical, main electrical switchgear and system, it will not drive your FCI up as high as if you have some of the more expensive items. So plumbing can be very expensive. So it, your number is going to go up based on items and systems that are more expensive to replace.
So that is a very important information. I don't think it's quite clear out there. And I also want to echo what Ms. Rivera Oven mentioned, that our building has public values. In a sense, many of the community functions co-locating in our buildings. Our building has healthcare, right? We have bridges to wellness and wellness centers. We have childcare centers in our buildings, before, after-school care, and early childhood programs. And we also have recreational value for the community. I can name two high schools that I know that it's impossible to book any time of their cafeteria auditorium, because it's so well-used. So, yes, let's continue to the next section.
So we are going to jump into the individual projects. We are going to start with the elementary school projects. I'm sorry, I skipped one. So we want to sort of frame what we have been doing, in addition, certainly, to the FCI. We have been in the process of doing a number of different feasibility studies, and wanted to sort of remind everyone why those are important, and how those play in to our consideration of a replacement or a renewal project. So as part of that feasibility study, the design team is evaluating whether we should renovate, renew, or replace in the feasibility studies, and these are posted online for the community to view. The state requires us to actually outline each of those four options. We're also looking at optimal building size, using the educational specification that we provide to the design team. that we provide to the design team to map out the program. The feasibility study also incorporates lifecycle cost analysis and supports accurate budgeting. So they all produce cost estimates that help us analyze across multiple feasibility studies, what are the construction costs looking like, what is escalation looking like, based on the years of construction that we are proposing. So this was helpful in addition to the framework and the CIP criteria that we have proposed to use as we think again about a replacement versus a renewal. So currently, in the superintendent's recommendation, we have five elementary schools. This includes Burning Tree, Cold Spring, Highland View, Piney Branch, that are anticipated to open in August of 2031. And Sligo Creek to actually open in August of 2029. So we're going to go through two slides per facility to kind of walk you through what this means, what the dollar amount. We have very preliminary sort of site based on the feasibility studies that we have been doing. Okay, so let's start with Burning Tree. In the proposal, we are proposing, this is around a $70 million project. Design and planning would be in fiscal years FY '28 through '29. You can see those outlined. And then we would move the school to a holding facility in FY '30 and '31, and the school would return to open in 2031. And this is one that has been undergoing a feasibility study last spring and through early summer. This is not the final plan, but it just articulates, you know, what this might look like, how it would be feasible to replace it onsite, and one of the options that was presented during the feasibility study and why this is really helpful as we take a look at renovation, renewal, replacement. I think one of the biggest pieces of Burning Tree and why the replacement is recommended is the challenges with ADA compliance. If you have been there before, while there is an elevator, you have to maneuver through many, many rooms because of the split levels that exist there. So, you know, while you can go to one end and then you have to matriculate through the other classrooms, that is certainly not ideal from an ADA compliance standard. I'll keep going if there's no immediate questions and go through maybe the five elementary schools and then we can pause for questions if that works. Okay.
Yeah.
Cold Spring Elementary is proposed for around a $60 million replacement project. Again, many of these have a very similar timeline to each other. Planning and design would be in FY '28 through '29. They would move to a holding school. And for those that don't know what a holding school is, that is also often referred to as a swing space. It is another facility that we have in our portfolio as MCPS that allows the students to be off the site while construction is happening. That is really an ideal scenario, particularly at the elementary level. They would be there in fiscal years '30 and '31 and would return in August of 2031 for a new facility. And here is again a preliminary. And as a reminder, Cold Spring is our last open plan facility that we have in MCPS. So there are a lot of classrooms in the middle of the existing facility. You know, one of our criteria is educational adequacy. This is a perfect example where we have many classrooms that don't have access to natural daylight. And that would be a big consideration. So this is very preliminary. Please don't get this set in stone in terms of the layout, but this is what was presented in the feasibility study as one of the options for replacement. Highland View is the next one with around a $70 million project. Again, similar timeline for design and construction. Planning and design would happen in FY '28 through '29. They would move to a holding school for fiscal year '30 and '31 and would return to a new facility in August of 3031, 2031, excuse me. If you recall, this is the one where we paused the addition project. And so the slide that we included here, we had been underway with a project. We included the existing site plan because the site plans that were shown in the study, and again, it's available on our website, only show an addition. And after, it goes back to Dr. Taylor sprinkling, right, after further consideration, this does not solve many of the needs. This is a very tight site. It is into a hillside, incredibly challenging for us to renovate or renew the project. And so while there are great design and construction teams that can really make this a great project, trying to renovate it is less than ideal given the site constraints. So that is why it's a recommendation for a replacement. Keep going, two more elementary schools. This is Piney Branch Elementary School, proposing about $78 million project. Again, same timeline as the other four. Design and planning would be in FY '28 and '29. Construction would be in FY '30 and '31. They would move to a holding facility as well. And the construction would be completed in August of 2031. And this was one of the preliminary plans that we included as a full replacement. This too is an incredibly tight site for us, not available, you know, for anyone to stay onsite and replace it, which is why the recommendation would stay for them to move to holding facility. If any of you hopefully have all been there, this too has incredibly challenging ADA compliance. It is quite a wonky building going up and down. They really make the best of it and it's absolutely wonderful space, but it is challenging from a circulation standpoint.
This would have a pool there.
And this is the final one for elementary school. Dr. Taylor shared last night that on the proposal for the recommendation for the superintendent is to reconsider the use of where Sligo Creek Elementary School are and Silver Spring International Middle School are. That was the old Blair High School. We are proposing to relocate the Silver Spring International Middle School students and to close that facility and reuse this as a holding school, as both an elementary and a middle school, holding facility. That is something that we do not have. We have no secondary holding facility in this county. That is a great need for us in terms of moving through. It is also in poor shape. And while we will continue to invest in it, we're going to continue to do small projects as students will continue to be there. You know, we'll do renovation, sorry, like restroom replacement and other smaller projects like that, the recommendation would still be to move both the middle school and the elementary. So we'll get to the middle school piece in the next set. But this is, proposal is to move Sligo Creek Elementary to a new location. We will do a site selection process, ideally within their boundary. And we would do that to identify the new location. We are proposing that would be done first. So this is the earliest of the elementary schools in FY '27. And then construction would take place probably starting mid-year of FY '28 through '29. And they would move in in August of 2029. And there's no site plan for this because this is part of the swing space discussion. So there's not been a feasibility study. So I'm going to end on this slide and we can take questions. This just gives you a sense of the sequencing of all of these, why it's important to open the new Sligo Creek, as we are proposing Piney Branch would go there for its holding location. And you can see where Cold Spring is proposed to go, Burning Tree and Highland View. And they would all be in their holding facilities at the same time.
Since we will have both separated elementary school and secondary school, this time around is just one round questioning and comment. I'm going to start from my right-hand side, Ms. Stor.
Yes. A big question I have that I've been getting is the accelerated timeline for Sligo Creek Elementary School. People are having a hard time understanding how that would actually be open in the year it says here.
It's a great question. And this is key in order for us to move forward with the other four from a holding school. We would envision doing a site selection process this spring pending your board approval and then moving through county. We could not start design certainly until the FY '27 budget would start, but we could do a site selection process this spring. We would kick off design, you know, the minute that FY '27. And for an elementary school of this year, we really need about 18 months of construction because we don't need, you know, it's a vacant, or you know, potentially a vacant site. We can move through construction in about 18 months. That's pretty typical for an elementary school. We usually say two years because we don't like to move a school mid-year. That's the key. That's why you see like Cold Spring, Burning Tree, they're showing two years. We don't truly need like often a full two years of construction. So it would be 18 months of design and about 18 months of construction in that three-year period.
So I'll just add that this is actually a fairly long runway, not a short runway. It's actually longer than some of the other projects from a design-build standpoint. And even though it is sooner in the timeline, it's actually the longer timeline that we're working with.
And the other follow-up question is, do you have a list of options for the new school? Because that's another question.
We'll continue to explore that in the spring and provide those options during the site selection process.
Thank you.
That is, that is a key part of the site selection process, is that identification.
Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. As it regards Piney Branch Elementary, in perens, it says assumes replacing community pool. Now, one question, I would love for us to have pools at all of our schools, quite frankly. I think we actually have an access to swim lessons issued in this county as well. And that would certainly help with that. But some, one question the community may have is why are we replacing a community pool at one school? Can you just speak to that just as briefly as you can? I know that, you know, there's some logistical things that happened when we got the land, et cetera, but so that the community can understand why that would be configured in there.
Well, it certainly is an option and something that the board will be confronted with as a decision point as we move forward. But right now, we're doing a very conservative assessment and assuming the maximum impact from a dollars and cents standpoint. That may be confronted with a fiscal reality that the board will have to consider at some point, depending on, you know, where we go in terms of financing. But right now, it's a community asset. It's a community asset that has tremendous interest. And before we take anything away, we want to begin from a place of assuming that the asset remains in place as we begin the process. Again, this is so early on in the process. And even though we've done some feasibility work, you know, it really does kind of depend on where you want to take it from here. And the community feedback is pretty strong. And we want to honor that community feedback in some of the preliminary planning. But it's a decision point.
Would there be any cost sharing between the city of Tacoma Park and MCPS? Or was perhaps there some sort of cost sharing or gifting from Tacoma Park prior that then helps? Do you kind of get where I'm going with this?
Yeah. And I think that that is something that needs to be explored. I mean, this is something new to the CIP in earnest in terms of scoping out the timeline for this project. So I think that those are some of the next step kind of conversation points that need to take place. And we need to do some due diligence and investigation to see, you know, what arrangements were made and what the expectations are. I think the best position for us to be in right now is to assume a replacement in kind until we have a recommendation that would run counter to that. But right now, I think the place to start from is to assume in kind.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera-Orfus.
Thank you for explaining Sligo Creek because I think that is going to need several times of explanation, just because without it, and maybe Dr. Taylor can clarify it for me. But without it, we cannot do the other projects. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's, it's one of those bottlenecks that we have to manage. So anytime that we're bringing up how we are going to scope and sequence projects, we have to keep into consideration what holding schools we're going to use and which ones we're not. It just works out to our benefit right now that some of the projects that we've scoped out are high on our desirability to replace, like Damascus High School and Eastern Middle School. And lucky us that we can replace them onsite without a holding school. But if we didn't have a holding school, we would have to deprioritize those projects or come up with another solution. So managing the bottleneck of where and when we utilize the holding schools is such an important part of this conversation that it really needs to take a front seat to some of the decision-making. And this gives us some flexibility that we otherwise normally wouldn't have.
The other thing I know that I'm already hearing is how can, how can we in good conscience be even thinking about building an elementary school that is over $70 million? But I would like us to just compare some of those projects that we have had. I know like during the period of the 2000s, we have 13 schools. And then lately, we had five new schools to build or reopen. I think it will help everybody digest a little bit better that the cost increase, you know, because I keep hearing we're building Taj Mahal.
Yeah.
Okay. So can we please address that? Because
Sure.
It's really bothering me a little bit here. Just how, you know, compared to what we, when we were building just even 10, 12 years ago, compared to the prices now. And we really, in some of these cases, don't have the luxury, as you said, to keep kicking the can down the road, to delay. I just, in fact, I don't think things are going to get better with cost. I think they're going to get worse.
Yeah. So this is a great conversation point. And really, this is what the board should be discussing because the reality is it may not cost $70 million to produce an elementary school. And to your point, since 2019, and this was illuminated in the state comptrollers report, that cost escalation has gone up 42% in just six years. I mean, this is the highest construction cost increase in our lifetime, in just such a short window of time, that it really, it really does change our dynamic really significantly in terms of how we respond to it. And it doesn't absolve our responsibility to address some of these issues. Like our need for the construction doesn't go away just because the costs have gone up. And I'm going to add one more dimension to this. The environment where there are steep tariffs on international steel and building materials and the constraints in labor because of some of the federal policies have really negatively impacted our future outlook in terms of cost. And all of those factors need to play prominently into this conversation. Ms. Wyatoka mentioned this very briefly, but some of the cost is going to be amplified just based on the location of service for some of these school locations. If you have spent any meaningful time at Piney Branch, it's a wonderful spot, but it is also a very tight location in which to build a school. And the topography is very unfriendly. You really do have to have the students leave the premises, tear down the physical structure that's there, and try to rebuild it almost on a very similar footprint because the topography is so unfriendly.
And the topography of Highland.
Oh, yes. Topography of Highland is also a really significant issue. Highland View in particular has some really significant issues where it makes it impossible to do anything different than the footprint that's almost already there. So those things do contribute negatively to cost. The last piece that I'll say to this, and this is something that I illuminated a little bit in our conversation last night, but it needs to be a part of our future, which is modesty in some of our school construction. And, you know, we are used to delivering beautiful learning environments that have all the bells and whistles. And we're really reaching a point where we can still deliver beautiful learning environments with maybe just a few less bells and whistles and still give our communities a place that they can be proud of to call their school. And that really needs to drive a lot of our conversation moving forward. So when we procure design services, we're going to have a very different conversation than the conversations we've had in the past. And our community members and our PTAs are used to engaging with very elaborate design options and used to making a lot of requests that get granted. And we might have to temper some of those requests to keep them within budget and to make sure that we are really exercising the tax dollar really efficiently in the hopes that it can save us enough money to generate the opportunity for more projects.
Thank you. Ms. Sylvester.
I think you may have already answered it, but page 37, you have the elementary capital projects. And the first four schools are in the top five ranking. Sligo Creek is number 47.
Yep.
So are you saying you need to move that up because you need that as a holding school for the future? So are you saying you need to move that up because you need that as a holding school for the future?
Yes, that is really the big piece of this is the holding facility. The other thing, the reason we also are considering all four of those in F Y 28 is to take into account the proposed elementary boundary study that we would like to consider to make sure we are building each of these to the appropriate projected enrollment and taking into account all the other elementary schools in that area. You know, we've talked about how there is capacity in some of the other elementary schools near both Cold Spring and Highland View. And so we need to make sure that we are building long term to the right capacity at each of these. And so that is also why we have pushed each of those out and started the design in F Y 28 to help us move through an elementary school boundary study first.
So are you also saying that you're going to, are you building a new? So are you going to take those students and put them in the surrounding elementary schools?
No, actually probably more the opposite. Just we really need to look at all the other elementary schools that are around each of these sites. We envision this being a comprehensive countywide study. But so that we ensure, you know, we're not building Cold Spring too small and relative to any other schools around there and all of them. We need a, you know.
And you still need a site.
For Sligo Creek. So Sligo Creek, perfect example would be the existing Burtonsville versus the Burtonsville replacement. We are building the Burtonsville school over in a new site. So this will be exactly the same example. So Burton, the existing Burtonsville can be reused as a different purpose.
Gotcha.
And the anticipated purpose would be an early childhood center.
Just want to say that site selection in that region of the county is no easy feat. So put a little asterisk on that. Thank you.
Well, if I could add just one piece to that point, anytime that we introduce even the possibility of closing a school to meet the strategic needs of the school system, it's an emotional decision. And it's one that has a lot of gravity and a lot of weight. And one of the things that we definitely looked at and had to consider was could we relocate Sims to another campus in that area? And candidly, that's one of the limitations is is there a space within the attendance zone that can accommodate from an acreage footprint, a middle school footprint, to rebuild that school? And one of the challenges is no, there's not. So site selection, it's absolutely critical. And fortunately for us, an elementary footprint is a lot smaller than a middle school or a high school footprint. But land is absolutely at a premium as we've seen over the last seven decades in Montgomery County. It's filled out pretty well. And so without exercising something extreme like an eminent domain, there really are only very limited options. And even those limited options have some limitations because of topography or because of, you know, where the potential campus could be located. And is it on the corner of a busy street or in the middle of a neighborhood and so forth and so on? So those are all considerations that have to be taken into play.
For full circle, I participated in the community process for the last site selection for that school years ago.
Ms. Imboman.
Thank you. And I think we're going to start to get into this in the next section as well. But as we're talking about Sligo Creek and Sims, they both still have needs. And as we potentially plan to shift them to holding schools, what's our plan for those needs that still need to be addressed?
Yeah, it's a very great question. And we actually, again, it'll continue to operate as a school, whether it's for a permanent school or whether it's a holding facility, we need to continue to invest in it. We actually have, through Healthy School Funds, we actually have funds to replace part of the roof there in F Y 26. And so that project will still move forward. So just like all of our other sites, we will continue to look at that for additional systemic and countywide projects for a restroom replacement and upgrade. We'll continue to look at it for those needs. And we can come back and provide a more comprehensive list of what we're looking.
Ms. Malu.
I just want to clarify the timeline for elementary schools. So even just slide 40 for Cold Spring Elementary School, there it says that for the first two years, it'll be planning and design. The students will still be attending the school during that time, and it will not interfere with their academic process. And then later on during the construction, that period of that summer, the communication engagement about wherever their holding school will be, will be. Yeah.
Yes, that is, that is correct. And actually, even before that summer, we'll be working with the school and the community throughout the design and planning process. So people have a heads up, they know where it goes. It takes quite a feat to move and pack and prepare a whole school to ship them over the summer.
And as Ms. Wolf mentioned earlier, for the public that does use these facilities for extracurricular activities, what will happen as for communication in those aspects?
Another key part in our messaging is making sure that they are notified well in advance before we move out. Yes, because that facility will come offline for them to use during that two years of construction.
Thank you.
So I want to come back to Sligo Creek Elementary School. Why was that one identified as a holding school site to completely rebuild when it's on the ranking of 47 versus all the other schools that might also be in the similar such building conditions?
Yeah, great question. So I wanted to pull up the holding school slide. You can see after Sligo Creek moves out, we are proposing Piney Branch to move there. We have a number of schools. If you actually look at the list of the ranking and then in Dr. Taylor's presentation last night, should we have gotten the $5 billion, right, and that hard truth number? If you look at the list of schools coming up, there are a number in the East County and the Silver Spring area. So we will be able to continue in future years to fill this beyond. We're only showing Piney Branch in here for now. But there are a number of schools that come up after that that we could benefit from having a holding school in this area of the county.
So primarily because their geographic location.
Correct.
And that's why in comparison to other holding facility we have throughout the county. Thank you for that. Let's continue to the next portion of the presentation.
Great. So we wanted to take you through the three secondary schools that are in the recommendation. We will move through Damascus High School, which is proposed for a replacement onsite. So the students would stay in their existing facility. Eastern Middle School, which is also proposed for a replacement. And Sligo Middle School, which is proposed for a renewal and an addition. And we have individual slides for each of these. Okay, so Damascus High School. This would be the single largest investment that we have made in a project. And this starts to show the cost escalation. Don't get scared by the number, but this is really what is needed for the full replacement. We have been working on a feasibility study with the community. They've been involved for the last year or so. But this proposal is different than what they. Previously, we were looking at a renovation and an addition project there. And if any of you have spent time in that facility, it has been appendaged over time, right? It is a lot of, going back to the sprinkling of decades of that happening at this facility. And so the proposal is in F Y 27 and 28 for us to move through the planning and design process. And then it typically takes us about three years of construction. The students would stay in the existing facility and we would build over on the fields. This is something we have done at the high school level before. You know, we'll need to work closely with our athletic team to provide alternative location. Again, we've done this for Seneca Valley and others over the years. Not ideal, but certainly the end goal is to provide a wonderful new learning facility for them. And this would open in August of 2031. And because the feasibility study previously only showed an addition, we're just showing the existing site plan for this. But you can see, you know, the field space that would be available there for us to build the replacement on. Eastern Middle School is the next one. And this one and Sligo Middle School are really important in terms of our consideration and proposal for Silver Spring International. So this proposal is for a complete replacement of Eastern Middle School. The planning would take place in F Y 27 and 28. And the construction would be on the field site in F Y 29 and 30. Students would stay as they currently are zoned in their existing facility. And I have a site plan coming up. And then when this opens in August of 2030, we would move part of the Silver Spring International Middle School boundary to this added capacity at Eastern Middle School. So that is, you know, Sims would stay as is for the next four years in their facility. And then when Eastern opens up a portion, and we will work on the boundary and all of that piece through a public process, portion of that would move over to Eastern Middle School. Here is what was shown in the feasibility study. And again, this is online and available for the community that we have gone through through the spring and summer. Currently, the facility, you know, is up against University Boulevard. So you would build the facility and the new school on the fields with the added capacity. And then similarly, the Sligo Middle School is needed as part of the rethinking and the strategy around Sims. So this one would start in F Y 28 and 29 with planning and design. While the students stay occupied in F Y 30, we would start to build an addition for the added capacity that is needed. And this will make sense in the holding school slide that we have in two. And then they would move, they would be the first school that would utilize the current Sims as a holding school while we complete a complete renewal of the existing facility. And then they would move back into the brand new renewal and addition in August of 2031. And so we've highlighted in red sort of how that sequencing works between the existing Sims building, Sligo moving in in school year 3031, and moving back in August of 2031. And I will pause there for questions.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I ask my colleagues to be brief with comments and direct with your questions. Ms. Stewart.
So what hasn't really been said out loud today so far is that the Silver Spring International Middle School would be no more and the kids would be redirected to these Eastern and Sligo Middle School. And then what we talked about earlier is about that whole building being a holding facility. And I do see it would be used also as a holding facility on that side for Sligo Middle School at one point, at some point. So the big question, the big question in the room is, we say this building is no longer serving the needs of our kids for these two schools in that building. And I, that's a true argument to be made, right? But the big question is then why is it okay for, as a holding school? If kids with the purple line being there, I think it was mentioned that the danger would be elevated for walkers and then other issues, having people come and go to the purple line right there at the school. So can you, we explain, could you explain why this is okay as a holding facility and not okay for school?
Not to go too far back in time, but 20-ish years ago, when the decision was made that the facility could no longer satisfactorily meet the needs of Blair High School and that there needed to be a new Blair High School. We constructed a new Blair High School. And the same conversation was underway, I'm sure, which is it wasn't good enough for Blair High School students, but yet all of a sudden, we're going to put middle school students in the same facility. And I think that there's a couple of things that need to happen. One, for sure, work needs to be done on the SIM site and continues to need to be done to elevate it so that it can be a satisfactory place for holding school. So even in the time that it changes hands from being an active school to a holding school, there's still work that needs to be done. As long as that building stays online, we will need to continue to invest and do work. The question is, is how much investment and for what period of time and under what circumstances? A lot of people can put up with a lot if it's temporary. It's a different environment altogether when you have to do something on a permanent basis. And a lot of this also revolves around our workforce that even in a middle school environment where kids come and go after a three-year period of time, the staff stays for a much, much longer period of time. And their working and learning conditions also need to be considered along with the students as well. One of the advantages of a holding school relative to a permanent school is that we don't typically have walk zones for holding schools. And when you have the potential for physical danger with a literal train right out front of the school without a lot of protective guardrails and fencing around that particular space, it does concern us. There is a physical safety concern. And if we switch to a holding school, we would just do bus transportation. And that would change the dynamic in terms of safety and give us a dimension of safety which is a little bit different than what we have right now because the school does serve the community that surrounds it. So there are pros and cons with everything. There's a trade off. And this is definitely one of those situations where it feels extreme and it's emotional in the moment. But the long-term benefits are certainly worth the short-term pain that we might experience in transitioning our approach for middle school in Silver Spring. At the end of the day, this is a historic investment in down county schools. It's a historic investment in Silver Spring. And to elevate the learning environments in Silver Spring, which have long been overlooked. And the data reflects it in our ranked priority and criteria list. And we're delighted to bring it forward in the sense that we are going to be correcting a lot of historical issues. But that work has to continue. And so that's some of the rationale as to why a holding school versus a permanent school, although I'm sure that there's more that the team could illuminate. But those are really the general brushstrokes.
So I think one thing that we do want to do on our agenda, we wanted to bring Silver Spring International Middle back next work session in part to do a deeper dive into some of the work and projects. So the team could certainly share some of those details today. But I think we do want to walk through more what we'll be able to do coming forward.
Thank you. I'm going to go down the line. Ms. Rivera-Orvans.
Thank you. Quick question and then a very quick comment. The Horton Nation of Damascus High School thanks you tremendously. This is a long awaited, just so the folks at home know and the people here. Damascus High School was established in 1909. The current building was built in 1950. And there were some renovations in 1978. So even since those renovations, it's been over 47 years. As an Up County resident, we kind of feel a little bit orphaned by services from our county and so on. But again, the development that is going on in Damascus is quite, you know, and the increase that we're seeing also in enrollment. Even though we're under enroll in some areas, we're seeing a spike in enrollment at Damascus High School. So I just want to say thank you. And just on that slide, I love the fact that we said, you know, replacing auto technology, that's part of the DNA in Damascus. But I'm a little bit nervous with the word assumes. Assumes means like, nah, we don't know. We're assuming. I just, just want to say that this would be a great place for this program. Again, this program has historically proven itself over and over again as being a program that it has made a difference in the lives of many of our students. I will hope that we were even incorporate, besides a traditional automotive program, we could also introduce the electronic component of electronic cars, which I did a little research. I'm not an expert. But it does not require a lot of space. Just thinking about the future and how, you know, we can expose our students to different professions. But again, just very, just very happy and humble that this is going to happen, Dr. Taylor. And I appreciate finally the fact that we are recognizing that the conditions in some of their schools are really no longer acceptable. So this is a major improvement in the lives of the Up County folks.
Thank you. Ms. Imboman.
Thank you. I think I'm starting to get into the next part again. I feel like I'm like a great transition point. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So I noticed that both Damascus and Eastern don't require a holding school for their full replacement. Some other schools that we've talked about needing replacement going forward, Wooten and McGruder, seems as though they would both need holding schools. Seems like that's kind of a big point here in moving forward. Is that true? Can you illuminate us a little bit more?
Yes, that is true. Both Wooten and McGruder are great candidates for a renewal project, meaning we would gut the inside of the building, bring them down to the studs, keep the structure. But in order to do that, we need the holding facility. The difference with Damascus and Eastern is sort of they're past that point, and so the recommendation is for the replacement project versus the renewal project at the other two high schools.
Thank you. And we are going to go to the next section in the interest of time. I do want to elevate Ms. Stewart's point about Silver Spring International School. Whenever, schools is the community's heart. That's where the community gather. So whenever we looking at completely closing down a school, we need to do a lot of work with the community to understand, first of all, what's our rationale? It has to be transparent and understandable. And second of all, to look at the whole of the community's needs. Okay. All right, let's go to the next portion.
Great. So the next part, we wanted to highlight three projects that we completed a feasibility study for this spring and summer, but we are not proposing to move those projects forward, each for slightly different reasons. But you will see in the book and the expenditure schedule, that funding being reallocated to other projects. So the first one being Damascus Elementary, and we've included their FCI depleted value and where they fall also in the CIP prioritization score. We have invested in this school, and we've provided that list of recent investments. We do need to continue, like so many of our schools, to invest in additional projects there. We have, our team is currently evaluating an ADA project that we actually have available FY '26 funds that we can use towards that. We know that that's been voiced in a concern, and so we will move forward with that project, and we will continue to evaluate other projects. And like we've shared, you know, the CIP prioritization will continue to be looked at on an ongoing basis as well and into the future. Twin Brook Elementary is the next one. We had also recently completed a feasibility study there, but given where it has fallen with its FCI and the CIP prioritization, we're not recommending this one to move forward either. We've provided a list of recent investments, and just like the other one, we'll continue to assess it for additional countywide projects. And finally, Whetstone Elementary. This one is slightly different than the other two. The reason we included this in the feasibility study last spring was to evaluate whether we could co-locate an early childhood center. And so while that was a helpful study, where it falls in terms of actually needing the renovation, renewal, or replacement does not fall high on the list at this time. So we'll continue to evaluate other sites to provide additional seats for the early childhood. And the last one, where funding is being removed, Bethesda Chevy Chase and Walter Johnson Cluster Elementary Schools had funding for a boundary study. In lieu of doing a small boundary study just for those, we'd like to propose the recommended larger countywide elementary boundary study instead, and that funding appears in the facility planning countywide line item. Okay, so we have one last section to roll through the presentation. I'm going to pass it back to DJ for this.
Sure. So some of our other educational facility projects include the alternative education programs and the early childhood centers. Part of Dr. Taylor's theme last night, and even in these enrollment slides, early on, you could see that for the past two or three decades, we've been chasing capacity. So a lot of our CIP has been focused on capacity projects, which in turn, kicking the can down the road, whether it was central office services, warehouse services, and these other facilities sort of were left behind. So with the decline in enrollment, this is a great time to invest in some of these other programs. So you can see for Alt Ed, we have a little bit over $31 million in the sixth year, and for early childhood centers, we have over 30. So many in our community do not know too much about the alternative education programs, but these programs serve students in grades six through 12. For a variety of reasons, we're not successful in their home schools. The Blair G. Ewing Center, formerly known as Mark Twain School, which is over on Avery Road in Rockville, was built in 1971, and it was the only campus for a variety of programs, variety of sites, and they were all housed under one roof until the 2018 and 2019 school year. After 2019, 2019 to 2020, they expanded from one physical building, which was on Avery Road and still is, to three sites. There was the site up in Germantown, Cloverleaf, and Plum Orchard in Silver Spring. And the reason for that was to provide regional access, you know, it's shorter bus times, and in the short of the long of it, it provides better learning outcomes for these students and all students. So that while it was great that we regionalized these services and these programs, the problem was we didn't have the infrastructure, the school infrastructure to support them. So they were actually located in office buildings inside of office parks. So these schools were, these students were not provided the opportunity to have a gymnasium and certain other features that our pre-K to 12 students have access to every single day. So another theme that I think you've noticed is we took a deep dive on our portfolio, our real estate portfolio. So now that our enrollment is declining, we can, we can shift and use our properties a bit differently. These two office spaces were closed and consolidated in the 2024, 2025 school year. The Cloverleaf location, which was up in Germantown, relocated back to Avery Road. The Silver Spring site, Plum Orchard, they closed just this past June, and that site is currently being held at the Northlake Center until we can identify a permanent solution, which is what Dr. Taylor is presenting in his recommendation. Just taking a deep dive in the history of Blair Ewing and alternative ed, it's been in the CIP since FY 2013. So I don't know if we have a can that could fit in this room that's big enough to kick it down the road. So this relocation has been in the works for 14, 15 fiscal years. Along those lines, we'll go with our pre-K and our PEP programs, our pre-educational programs, which is our threes and fours with learning differences. And we currently have 148 classrooms in Montgomery County Public Schools that serves students, serves PEP students. I know this is a very busy map, but it shows that we are very regionalized in the way that we serve our pre-K. Our general education pre-K students are in 146 classrooms. And if you notice, this is a heat map, so the darker green is the more students that we serve in pre-K. So you can see spread out through the county where the students are and where our buildings are. So our plan, right now, we have two existing early childhood sites. We have McDonald Knowles down in Silver Spring, which serves five classrooms. And we also have the Up County Early Childhood Center, which is temporarily being held at the Emory Grove Holding School. But Dr. Taylor's recommendation would be to make Emory Grove the permanent location for the Up County Early Childhood Center, and that is going to come with a significant investment. Next year, we also have existing Burtonsville Elementary, which right now we're calling Early Childhood Center Number Three. That will come online next year. We are going to start out with 12 classrooms for next school year, and then we are going to construct a little bit more, and it'll eventually serve 24 classrooms. It will be our largest early childhood center that we have in MCPS. And it is important to note, and there are symbols on the map, to show that we will hopefully be coming back with future CIP requests because we do have other buildings that could serve early childhood in the places where pre-K is needed. All right? And you can see that by FY 2032, we plan on serving 4,500 income-eligible, full-day, four-year-olds, which includes Tier One and Tier Two income-eligible students. This will require 79 more classrooms, and I think Ms. Silvestri was talking about, we don't have those spaces at those elementary schools necessarily. We also plan on serving 2,300 pre-K students receiving special education services. That is going to require 116 more classrooms. Those classroom sizes are significantly lower than our gen-ed pre-K, which is why you see the classroom count a lot higher. We plan on doing this by a mixed delivery model using early childhood centers and also after the elementary school boundary study, with enrollment balancing out, with utilization balancing out, we should be able to achieve this with that mixed delivery model. Just like the other holding school charts, this is sort of the, this is the recommendation for Emory Grove to become the permanent location. You can see that the renovations will occur in the 2031, 2032 school year. Right now, that one site that is at Northlake Center, right now, it's being proposed to stay at Northlake for another school year, for next school year, and then moving to the Fairland Center, which will be open for two school years. And eventually, we will be relocated to the Spring Mill Center, which is down in Silver Spring, it's down the Kent Mill area, which would provide those regionalized services for those students that live Down County.
That's the end of the presentation for today, so happy to take questions on that last section.
Yes. I'm going to start from my left-hand side to see if there are any questions. Ms. Silvestri.
Thank you. Thank you for this very thoughtful presentation, and I'm trying to get back to the big chart, which is available where for our viewing audience?
This is on the CIP webpage.
So for FY '27, just in summary, if I'm understanding correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong, we are finishing up some of our current projects like Crown and Northwood, et cetera. We have a series of countywide projects with some money funded, and starting Damascus and Eastern.
And Sligo Creek. Those three would start design. Sligo Creek is up at the top?
Oh, okay. 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 So just in summary.
Correct.
Finishing up our current lineup of projects that are already underway, countywide projects that we all know we need. When the roof is leaking, we have to take care of it. And then those Damascus, Eastern, and Sligo Creek.
As well as Alt Ed as well.
And where is that?
That is under the countywide project, the second one down. Alternative education programs, we would start design in FY '27, and then we would move into construction.
Okay. So just for our viewing audience, that's it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Ms. Rivera-Ovins.
Can we go to the alternative education programs? And just a timeline so I can understand. Okay. So we're going to start next, no, in two years, FY '27, once we, this is approved, right? So that will be next year. First, can I say that this is long time due? And you said, correct me if I'm wrong, that this has been since?
2013.
Okay. Well, shame on us, in a sense, because I wish you could have provided pictures of the facility. Because just having this, it doesn't do justice. And I have toured the facilities with Ms. Montoya and Ms. Stewart. Recently, I have been there. I have had during my many other hats, students who were referred to Mark Twain and so on. And I understand fully the reasons why we closed Cloverleaf and the other site in Silver Spring. But this is, if there was ever an equity issue, this would be one of the top examples for me. So I would like us maybe just to explain a little bit why, because people say, well, these are temporary holding facilities, so why are we investing on temporary things? But the reality, sometimes they're not so temporary. There's kids who are supposed to be there for a few weeks, but they're not. I don't have to go into all the issues that we're having with mental health and bullying and all this stuff and those components that we know are real. But I just would like maybe for you to explain a little bit the reasons why, but also how horribly deplorable the just environment were in these facilities. And I'm just going to say, as somebody who's worked in juvenile justice and who's gone to a lot of facilities in the state, that some of those facilities were even a lot better than the ones that our kids are learning in as of today. So if you could just indulge us a little bit more.
I have a very directly related question. Is it okay if I ask it now? That way they can just answer once?
Sure.
Because I too have been in all of those, and I was a juvenile public defender, so I've been in facilities in all kinds of places in the United States. My concern also is the bouncing around that we're having this program do and the staff and potentially some of the students, depending on how long they're there, because some students, once they get there, realize they're doing really well and they want to be there. In addition to, I was at Norbeck Road when the community was, quite frankly, in an uproar. There was yelling, there was all kinds of things going on, and I was there to hear from the community. Some folks came in and even testified. Councilmember Fanny Gonzalez was there, some of our staff, some of you were there, Mr. Mahmoud. And I'm just wondering a couple things. Are we going to have that same repeat? So every two years, we're going to go through all of this again? And just the stability, right? Anytime we move kids around, it's challenging. So just in addition to Ms. Rivera-Ovins' questions, thank you.
So high level, we're going from zero to 100 in this CIP with alternative ed. It's been something that has sat on the back burner in perpetuity for a decade, and this is the first real effort to solidify a permanent place and a permanent home for this program. This is a group of students that needs a lot of support. The intention absolutely is temporary, and I got to tell you, I had the same questions and concerns about bouncing around. I think that the effort to find a permanent location is really where we're at, and we do have some constraints with holding facilities. So...
Why can't we just leave them where they're at until the space is ready, I guess, is ultimately kind of what I'm getting at?
We can, and that certainly is an option, and this is one vision of what that, what that could look like. There is one advantage with our alternative programs, which is that the population is intended to be temporary, and really what we're talking about is staff displacement, which is just really annoying and very difficult to manage. We don't, we don't like moving. The fewer moves that we can do, the better. And we can certainly revisit that and bring back a different version and a different look at that. This does reemphasize the choke point issue that our holding schools have in terms of how we manage these bottlenecks for every single one of these projects is critical. The sooner that we land alternative programs in a permanent location, the better off we are. The sooner that we land the early childhood seats and classrooms, the better off we are. I think that this does present an optimistic view of a way that we can serve this group of students a lot better. The really frustrating point is that the board and the school system have been put in a position where you have to make choices that are really just awful choices, because every single child in the district is precious, and every single child in the district needs to be in a learning environment where they can thrive. And unfortunately, our alternative students have been marginalized for a really long period of time in the belief that because they're in a temporary location or a temporary program, that somehow their program is less important. And it really is our intention with this proposal to emphasize how important they really are. And so we'll bring something back to reflect that.
Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
I also am concerned about the Down County alternative ed programs moving so much. So I wanted to, just, I'm going to go back real quick to SIMS, Silver Spring International Middle School, because we mentioned about upgrades. These kids have been through a lot with construction, right? Because we did a lot of construction with them onsite. Because we, we did a lot of construction with them onsite, and also the elementary school had to live with that, too. So as we're doing these improvements, will they mainly be in the summer? Like, when will you be making these improvements?
Yes, those, the smaller ones would all be in the summer, and I think that's an excellent point, too. Like, the goal of relocating them is, you know, we've talked about Eastern, we've talked about Sligo Middle, right, is that they are going to new facilities. And I think that's a really important piece, because they have been through a lot of different pieces of construction on that site.
So I want to point out one critical piece of information here, too, is that none of the decisions that we're proposing right now will have an immediate impact on any of the students who are currently attending Sims. So the group of students that have had a lot of struggles with construction and have had to interact in that space, those are not the children that will be impacted by this, and not directly. And we're sensitive to that as well. And, and so that, that's a factor that plays into this. But the next generation of students who are currently served in that attendant zone, making sure that they are going to facilities that don't have the construction drama is one way that we can enhance the, this community, the, the response to this community's needs.
Okay. And I'm going to end, first of all, a couple things. Thank you for a couple things that I see in the CIP, which I've not seen in the past, which really made it frustrating as a member of the public to dig into some of these numbers and see exactly where our tax dollars are going. And so this makes it so much more clear, because in the past, the major capital projects were not broken down by project by project, and you really had to dig in to find out that information. And this makes it so much more clear, and it's right in the book. And the other thing we hear about all the time is, when is my HVAC program planned? Because that list was buried in places, and it wasn't done year by year. And you also did that in the CIP book. So two really good transparent upgrades, and I want to thank you. I want to get into the numbers just a little bit, not high level, I mean, not at the minute level, but high level. I'm looking at this expenditure year by year. And so this is what, you know, I do every year. I look at the expenditure year by year. And of course, the first couple of years are the most important to look at, because you know that we do this every two years, and those will actually be happening as long as our money stays pretty much the same.
What's your question, Ms. Stewart?
My question is, the very last year goes down significantly, and I know that, so it goes from 530 million in FY '31 down to 297 in FY '32. And I'm just curious, like, this is something that we, that happens a lot in CIPs and the out years, but we do hear that the council would like to see, like, realistic spending through all the years. And so I just wanted to know a response to why that happened.
The, the biggest piece that is different in FY '32 is you'll see the major capital projects, elementary and secondary, are not included. And that is really, I mean, we've already given you a $2.7 billion, so to try to stay realistic with what can be funded, we did not include any additional projects. Certainly, we would want to continue the queue, and you saw the list in Dr. Taylor's presentation last night, like, based on where things are currently falling, we know how to keep filling those holding schools, particularly at the elementary level, and we would love to start rolling those schools through for renovation and renewal. But we had to be mindful of the overall bottom line.
So these numbers are really big in the individual years, especially once you get to year three. This is going to have to be a discussion with our county. We talked about taking care of our special education spaces, our alternative education spaces for our air quality in our schools. This is going to have, this will be a huge countywide discussion, because that number is large and much larger than anything we've ever had in the past. So thank you so much for doing the work. There's lots more to be done. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm really glad that you brought that up, because I hope that you can see a couple of things happening. First is that in year one and year two, there's a very intentional ramp up that's occurring before we get to years three and four, because what we are hoping to signal to our funding partners is our intention to get to this place over time. And so this, this does take planning, and even though we're mainly concerned with what happens in fiscal '27, because it sets into motion a multi-year plan, this is intentionally designed to ramp up and to follow a ladder strategy of how we can get to that point. Now, don't get me wrong, two years from now, we're going to come right back to you, and we're going to be filling fiscal '32, fiscal '33, fiscal '34. I mean, we're, we have designs on how we can make progress on backfilling our holding schools with future school projects, but being sensitive to that, I think your most realistic view of what a very realistic plan might look like does look like fiscal '27, '28, '29, '30, and '31. And you'll see the successful conclusion of a lot of the school projects in '31. And when we come back on the second year of the biennium, two years from now, you'll, you'll see us filling out those outlying years and hopefully growing our ladder even further.
Thank you for that context.
Thank you, everyone. So as a school system, our responsibility is to clearly define educational needs and operational readiness. And all of this have to be done in the context of affordability, revenue forecasting, and prioritization. And that is something we must work collaboratively with all levels of government. Now, this is the first of the work session. We, this is a proposal, and we are going to have two community hearings. And so it has already started, the sign up, noon today, about 30 minutes ago, it has started, and we'll come back November 4th after the, the two hearings to do the second work session. So thank you, everyone, for your participation today. What's that? Oh, do we, no, this is, this is a work session. Do we need a?
No, we just need to read into.
Oh, we are going to go into a closed session. Okay. So Ms. Manon, would you do us the favor?
I moved at the board meet in closed session to address topics listed in the post resolution for today's closed session and for the reasons and, and on the basis stated therein.
Second?
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone.